To our special meeting today, April 3rd, 2012. We welcome the Napa County Board of Supervisors to join us in this special joint meeting today. It is technically a continuation of a meeting that they started previously. So what we are going to do today is have separate role calls for the Yountville Town Council as well as the Board of Supervisors and then we will move on into a more typical structure. Before that, I know that we do have some folks that are not normally with us today, so welcome. I do want to let you know that we have staff reports on the wall to your right if you are still looking for those. Also, we ask if you would please turn off your cellphones so that we don't have interference with our audio equipment. So if you would please do that. And I will lead by example. With that, if we could have the role for the Yountville Town Council, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And then I invite the Chair of the Supervisors then to take role.
Reconvene the Board of Supervisors' meeting and confirm the role, please, Gladys.
Yes, all members are present except for Supervisor Luce, who is excused.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to public comment. So if any members of the public are here today that would like to address the Board of Supervisors and the Yountville Council, and you have an item that is not on our agenda for today, feel free to come on up and share your thoughts. Now would be the time. You'll certainly be invited to participate during our agendized items as well. So seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to our existing agenda for the joint meeting with our Board of Supervisors. And we'll start off with Agenda Item 4A, Board of Supervisors Agenda Board Letters. The first presentation we're going to hear today is from Clay Gregory from our Napa Valley Destination Council. We're going to get a status update on activities related to the Tourism Improvement District. So I believe, do we have any staff report prior to Mr. Gregory's presentation? Steve, no? Then Clay, you're welcome to step up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to be part of this joint meeting. I think it's a great idea to get the county and the town and the rest of the cities to communicate as well as possible, so happy to be part of it. I'll say in the very beginning that John and Steve saw a good amount of what I'm going to show at the Yountville Business Roundtable that we just had a couple of weeks ago, but there is a new video and I know that Steve in particular likes the videos because he finds them sexy. So with that...
Okay. I want to see that sexy video.
Yeah, could you help me? Thank you. So I'm talking about mid-year highlights although we're really going to focus on accomplishments just for the last quarter, so January through March. We've covered the mid-year highlights at that last meeting and I have those in other presentations. Talk about results where we are to date, and again, I'll be more current than mid-year. And then I'll talk a little bit about specific Yountville activities too because I know that's important to the Town Council and to the citizens of Yountville. Cool. So the way to show the mid-year highlights in a fashion that is entertaining and digestible in a much more quick manner than going through ream after ream of data is to show a little what we call a sizzle reel which will show you the highlights of the last few months. So if you could click on that, this should turn into music. There we go. And that's for sure. So that's just a sampling of clips that we have had since December. There's a lot of other things that I'm not going to go into, but social media, our social media followers are incredibly higher than what they have been in the past. Our website is doing really, really well especially given the challenges that we have with what is a less-than-ideal URL in legendary Napa Valley and we're actually looking at some ways that we can help make that URL be more intuitive. But at the end of the day, what our, the folks who are providing our funding, the lodging community, want to know is how well they are doing. And they all know that individually, but we look at how they're doing as a group. And the most important thing here is the running 12 months. These numbers are through February and on occupancy, we were at about 63.7% for those running 12 months which is up by about 7% over the year ago. And the really exciting thing and interesting thing is that we're now starting to hit much better numbers for a year ago because things were starting to come out and get better. So we're not looking at the really low numbers from 2009, we're now looking at more robust numbers from 2011. The average daily rate is what ADR is and you can see that for the running 12 months, we were at about $233. Just to put that in perspective for you, Sonoma's average daily rate for that same period is about $115 a night. Monterey's in between at about $175. So our average daily rates are high, they're significantly higher than San Francisco's. San Francisco's are less than $200 a night. So I don't know what the exact comparison would be, but there would be very few destinations in the United States that would have a higher average daily rate than we have. And our hotels like that. And you can see importantly, not only is it high, but it grew by 7.5% over the year before. So, and that's a reflection of the great lodging that we have including, you know, Bartisono here and Velagio here and just around the valley, really superior lodging. We're very lucky to have that. RevPAR is everyone's favorite thing to say. It means revenue per available room. And basically what it does is it combines rate with occupancy, so it is a combination of those two measures. $147 of revenue per available room is a really nice number. Sonoma would come in well below $100 and to be up by 15% over the year before is very, very positive. And you can see on a total revenue basis, which this is the entire hotel revenue of the participating hotels in this reporting, this is from a company called Smith Travel Research, and one of the things that's really interesting here is that a year ago, we had less than 20% of our properties participating in this. And it gave us incomplete data and Smith Travel Research actually included in the Napa County numbers, Vallejo and Fairfield, which made the numbers really meaningless. So with the help of Rick Swig who owns the San Helena Harvest Inn and who's very connected in the world of travel, we got Smith Travel Research to agree to take those two areas out that aren't even in Napa County if we could get enough of our properties reporting. So now 75% of total rooms represented is a really, really strong number, stronger again than either Sonoma or Monterey and they've had a meaningful destination marketing effort a lot longer than we have. So I think everyone's interested in this. This is our breakdown of spending for the fiscal year that we're in. There are three main buckets. Group sales is our effort to reach out to groups and meetings that are going to go somewhere for, whether it's for an incentive trip or just a meeting or some kind of a gathering, usually a business kind of gathering is what these groups are. For us, corporate groups are really good and incentive groups are really good because those two areas are comfortable with where our hotels are positioned from a pricing standpoint. And we have, you know, we didn't have a meaningful effort in this field at all a year ago and now we do. We still need to get better at this, but we are doing much better than we were. Brand marketing and communications, that's all of our public relations, all the articles that you saw in the sizzle reel came out of those efforts. Some of it's in-house. We also have two PR agencies that we use for different specific groups. And then we have direct-to-consumer marketing which is the way of the world now as you all know from what's happening with social media and email and web-based and mobile-based. And we, I think, are certainly far ahead of any destination of our size in the focus on that, in part because direct-to-consumer marketing is so important to the wine industry and we're so tied into the wine industry that we're really, really strong on that. And when I get to go to conferences and hear what folks are working on, especially like on the mobile, we've had the mobile device now for about a year and a half or the mobile app and a lot of destinations still don't have that. So I feel really good about that area. Maybe the one I'm most excited about though is, doesn't sound exciting, but it is to me, research and marketing intelligence. As most of you know, there hasn't been a robust visitor profile for Napa Valley visitors since Purdue did that study in 2005, which from a data standpoint, it's worthless even though people still use it because that's all we have. So we have hired a firm called Destination Analysts in San Francisco who's done a lot of work with San Francisco Travel and Visit California. And they will start field testing this week, the next round of research which will give us both a robust visitor profile of our visitors. And it will also give us importantly for all of the folks in this room and the other cities as well, it will give us an economic impact of tourism on Napa County number which we again haven't had since 2005. So, and I think that's, the rest of it is staff and non-marketing or sales dollars. So real quickly, some of the things that are coming up, well, group meeting sales, we talked a little bit about that, but look forward. Brand marketing, communications, direct-to-consumer marketing, partner relationship management and the research I pretty much covered, but we'll go through a couple of the programs that are on the way. So we started about six or nine months, maybe now a year ago, calling our focus season Cabernet season because it sounds better than winter or a low season. But it's also about wine and the main reason why visitors come here is for the wine. So it's cooler that time of year, but it's not anything compared to the East Coast or to many other parts of the world in terms of bad weather, but it's cool enough to where our chefs are making heartier dishes that pair best with our flagship wine which is Cabernet Sauvignon. So, and it's catching on. It was really fun at the Yountville Business Roundtable to hear the gentleman from Edelman talk about Cabernet season and other people mentioning it. So it's catching on. And underneath Cabernet season, which is November through April, that's basically the only time of the year that we spend any money on marketing. That's it because for the most part, we really don't need any help from May through October. So you saw the highlights of some of these things, but Flavor Napa Valley was the first new meaningful wine and food festival in Napa Valley in decades that happened last November. Napa Valley Film Festival was the same time. Legendary Napa Valley Holidays. Restaurant Month, we just did again, this time very successfully. Second year round, obviously it helps, we had 45 restaurants participating which was very strong. Then February and March, our legendary Napa Valley Getaways, we're going to fine tune this a little bit. In February, it was Romantic Getaways, Girlfriend Getaways. March is going to end up being more about wellness and outdoor activities and golf and recreation and spas and things like that. And then Arts in April just started a few days ago and this is the second Arts in April. We're doing that in conjunction with Arts Council Napa Valley. And this year, we're really excited about it. It's focused on wineries and I'll talk about that a little bit in more depth. And then the other things are kind of lower-level ongoing promotions and we support things that we think are meaningful to bringing heads into beds in the right time of the year. And, you know, we don't ignore things that happen in the wrong time of year from a calendar standpoint or a calendar on the mobile app like the Festival de Soleil, we put it on our web, but we don't spend any money supporting it because it's in July and it's just not when we really need the support. So, and go ahead, that slide shouldn't be that. So that's the collateral from Napa Valley Restaurant Month, you can just keep going through that. And then we talked about romance, girlfriend getaways, wellness, I'm so thorough, we can go to the next one too. So talked about the winery art focus, it's, there are 30 wineries participating. The amazing thing is that there are about 70 wineries in the Napa Valley that have either permanent or rotating collections of art. And Yountville has a very strong arts organization here and we've worked really hard to support the arts across the board for two reasons. One, the arts doesn't have a lot of money to support itself, three reasons. Two, because there's good data that shows cultural tourism which is what people coming to see the arts is, those folks stay longer than the average visitor and they spend more money than the average visitor. So we like both of those things. And then the third thing, I think from a community standpoint, is that the arts, like the restaurants, need visitors to survive. We don't have a population to support the arts venues that we have. So visitors help keep those places alive for residents to go to just like we wouldn't have some of the restaurants that we have if it weren't for visitors. So we've done a lot with the arts. And Arts in April this year, I think, is going to be a big success. And one of the things that we did too, well, we with Arts Council Napa Valley, all the wineries that are in this had to join the Arts Council. So they each contributed $250 to become a member of the Arts Council to participate. So it's an effort to help get the Arts Council to be financially self-sustaining and this is a good start. Okay. Okay, the newest thing and the most exciting thing, the biggest thing, the most challenging thing is our featured space as the official wine region of the 34th America's Cup together with the Napa Valley Ventners, together with the County of Napa. We've all worked on, very hard on taking this position. And it was interesting because the Ventners couldn't have gotten this position without the Destination Council and vice versa because they don't have the ability to put together packages from a travel standpoint and from a lodging standpoint. And we certainly don't have the ability to provide the wine that the Ventners have. So it's kind of the culmination of us working together for really the last two and a half years. We'll be the only wine served at any of the venues in the United States until the events are over, which I'll talk about the dates in a second. We'll market the partnership with the America's Cup on an ongoing basis as a brand-building effort, as a, you know, partnering with one of the global, high-end, great brands of the world which is where Napa Valley should be paired with. And so it won't be so much about bringing people, we will want to bring people up here from the events, but it'll really be about using the America's Cup branding even when events aren't happening here. And our hotels are very excited about that. So if all goes well, we have one more video. Hit that one more time.
Did it one more time?
Yes.
Okay. Sweet. Sweet.
It's going to be very exciting. The television coverage of this is going to be really important because I don't know anything about yacht racing, but I'm learning. It's not easy to follow. And so they've taken a lot of technology which you saw up there, like what started with NFL Films where, or the NFL television broadcast where they have that yellow line that shows the first down. They use that to show which boat is in, ahead of the other boat. They give you real time exactly how fast it's going to the tenth of a kilometer per hour. It's a big step that NBC Sports, their new sports network, is covering it. And America's Cup is managing all the production themselves. So it's a very high-tech thing. They've got like six cameras on each boat and then two helicopters up in the air as well. So let's go one more, should be one more America's Cup slide and then I'm done. So this is the calendar. The next series of events that we'll be involved in is in Newport, Rhode Island. There are two races in Italy prior to that, but we're only the official wine region for the United States, we're not for the whole world next time however. Then in San Francisco this year, August and October. And then in 2013 is when it really heats up in July through September. And then the America's Cup itself which will be Larry Ellison's Oracle against the team that beats all the others along the way will be, actually now, that's going to be in October. With all the changes that have happened in the city of San Francisco, I'm sure many of you have read about, that last date's going to be in October instead of September. And all those changes really are not going to affect our involvement. Our involvement's going to be very much exactly as it was and because our focus is on brand building and telling people about the Napa Valley, not so much marketing San Francisco, we're going to be just fine. And we have a really nice relationship with San Francisco Travel now that's developed over the last couple of years. And we hope that we end up getting hospitality space in the city that we'll share with them because they'll bring more folks into it. We'll make it a much more attractive place with Napa Valley wines and other Napa Valley accoutrements and they're very excited about that idea. So I think that that is it. Oh yeah, except for the most important part of all, for the town of Yountville, sorry. So real quickly, we've got, I'm going to go through this a little bit differently because not everything's up there and I want to make sure I don't miss any specifics. Steve Rogers is on the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation Board which is the oversight board for the TID as is David Shipman. David Shipman is also on the Destination Council Board itself on the Lodging Committee. David Shipman is the Chair of that committee. Jim Tredway is on it from Bartisono. Shelley Post is on it from Lavender and Maison Flori. Tim McGregor from Napa Valley Lodge and Steve DeVino from Hotel Yountville are all on the Lodging Committee and all very participative. Cindy Crater from Napa Style and Sue Bizono from Velagio are on our Marketing Committee. I won't go through the whole thing, but with the Welcome Center here in Yountville, we provided them with an iPad and the visit to Napa Valley, applications go along with that. We provide them with guidebooks and maps and all the collateral. We provide them with things around, things that are happening throughout the valley and obviously they focus on Yountville. The Arts in April program, Yountville has three wineries that are participating in that and was listed in the, I don't know if you all saw the Chronicle insert that we did, it was about 12 pages of Napa Valley Arts in April which was part of an advertising deal that we did with them. We didn't actually pay for any of that. We had bought other advertising along the way. Yountville was featured in that as well. So we're really happy to have Yountville involved as they are. And do you have any questions?
Questions from the Council? Any questions of Mr. Gregory?
I have just one, please. When was that insert in the Chronicle? I subscribe and I don't remember seeing it.
It was about three weeks ago. We have copies. We have, in fact, there are 8,000 copies floating around in mostly wineries who are participating in Arts in April, but we can get you copies if you want.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's very nice.
Was that the Pink Pages spread that came out?
No. It's a spread that looks like the travel section, but it's all only about Napa Valley and it's only about Arts in April. It has a little tab on it that says Napa Valley Arts in April on the side.
Okay.
We'll get you something.
Yes, as it relates to Yountville, can you give us any information in terms of people that come here, some of the things they really like about Yountville so we can continue doing them? Some things that maybe you've heard that they would like to see? Any specifics?
Only anecdotally, but with our research, we will be finding out exactly where people went and what they did and what they liked best and what they liked least. So we'll have a better shot at doing that. We also will be, this is actually going to be, is more pertinent, I didn't talk about this, but one of the reasons why we chose the firm that we did, Destination Analysts is because they're using a three-pronged approach to the research. And it's, a lot of organizations that one hires for this, especially for a destination like ours where the average visitor is relatively affluent and hard to get to, they use a panel of people who they go out to once a month or once a quarter to get information about a specific thing, whether it's a destination or something else. But on those panels, they can only ask a question like, have you been to the Napa Valley in the last three years or do you plan on going in the next three years? And then ask them the series of questions that they want to ask. So there's a tremendous amount of disparity in terms of when that data is from and how well they remember whatever the question they're answering. And what we're doing is a hotel survey of guests as they leave. They'll be given a paper survey that they'll be asked to complete as they fly home or whenever they have a chance, or they can also do it online. And we now have, I think we have about 3,500 rooms out of the 5,000 rooms in Napa County agreeing to participate in that survey. So that will be one method to get people who are here, you know, right when they're leaving. And we'll do that every quarter for the next year. So we'll get some seasonality to it and we'll get more robust data than just doing it once. And it doesn't give survey burnout to the hotel staff either. But then the other thing we're going to do is we're going to do what's called intercepts. So there will be folks in different parts of the valley, including the vintage market, vintage whole estate area actually, talking to people when they're here in Yountville and asking them basically the same set of questions. So they may or may not be hotel guests, but we'll find that out. But there will be some day trippers in that. There will be people who are staying in their friend's or family's house instead of staying in a hotel. So we want to get as many different kinds of visitors as we can for that survey. So that, we will be able to say how folks' answers when they were in Yountville was different than maybe when they were in Calistoga or American Canyon. And then the third one is more relevant to the trade and that's we'll be doing interviews with meeting planners to find out if they booked meetings here, if they did, what they liked about it, what they didn't like it and so on. But the anecdotal answer is everybody loves Yountville and they especially love the dining scene.
Great.
And they love the fact that it's walkable.
Great. Before I invite the public to comment, the Board of Supervisors have any questions of Mr. Gregory? No? Vice Mayor?
My one question has to do with, well, first of all, I think it's great that the focus is in the, call it the off-season or Cabernet season as it is because we seem to have enough people coming the rest of the year.
We do.
To make it a year-round of a destination as possible is good for everyone. I know that this was the first restaurant month which happened to coincide with a lot of restaurants closing. I heard some kind of negative feedback about that. Can you comment on kind of the future and how that is going to work to stay in January?
Yeah, it's in January right now because that's California Restaurant Month. That doesn't mean we have to do it in January. This year was interesting because we did it last year too. This was actually the second year. But this year was the first year where so many restaurants closed in January. So yeah, we were kind of taken aback by that. I think ideally, we'd like to have something in February and/or March that has had more sizzle than Restaurant Month, something more like Flavor Napa Valley or the Film Festival probably has to stay where it is because of the order of film festivals and, but it would be good to have something with some more sizzle in February, but we're not locked into January for Restaurant Month. It did do pretty darn well though this year. It didn't help the restaurants that were closed though, you're right. Didn't help the restaurants that were closed though, you're right.
Your birthday month, is that what you're looking for?
Feel free to use it.
Well, and there is a little competition locally here in Yountville with our movable feast effort. And so there was a little bit of a misunderstanding or confusion in the public. Maybe it actually benefited each, but there does need to be that continued communication about how we're going to serve the public best.
Right. One of the things that we've worked really, really hard at, and hopefully people feel it, is to communicate with all five of the cities in town, which is not an easy thing to do. But we have, you know, we're connected to all the chambers, we're connected to all the local tourism improvement districts. In cases where they have public relations companies like Edelman here, we're connected to Edelman. But, yeah, there are a lot of moving parts and we've come, you know, we've done a lot of things in a short amount of time and there's no doubt that there's room to improve.
Great. I'm going to invite members of the public that would like to comment on Mr. Gregory's presentation. Now would be the time. Is anyone interested? Come on, you're such a quiet group today. It's a special meeting. It's the first time we've done this. All right, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thanks for having us.
Maybe you're all here to speak to our Library Services discussion. I'll invite our Director of City and County Library, Dennis Krymeyer. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Dennis Krymeyer, Director of Library Services, welcome. I don't have a sizzle reel. I'm depressed now. But I probably could learn how to make one at the library. But I do have some nice handouts. I would call it our annual report about the library. And I just want to tell you what we've been doing lately at Napa City County Library at all our locations, our four locations. Recently, we started a community needs assessment process where we wanted to find out what is happening out in the community. And this was to get started on a new strategic plan. We had a strategic plan earlier, about four years ago, and the exciting thing is, is we did everything we said we were going to do. And you can read about it in the handout. And so we gathered about 25 community members on two meetings in January and again in February. And they represented a broad spectrum from across Napa County. Some of the people that we had there represented, we had somebody from Napa Wine Country Broadcasting, Napa Valley College attended. We had someone from the Napa Valley Destination Council attended as well. Our local foods came. We had representatives from every city in town where we have a library. Rutherford Grange came, the school district of course, Calistoga High School. So we had representatives from senior helpers. So we had a nice range of community members came and gave their input. And first we talked all about Napa County and we did a SWOT analysis of what are some of the challenges that Napa was having. And then we scoped it down to look at what could the library do to address that. So the library service responses that the community group chose was to create young readers, connect to the online world, information literacy, learn to read and write, satisfy curiosity, stimulate the imagination, and succeed in school. So the next step of the process is we're going ahead and we're developing goals and objectives and activities for each goal. And we're also looking at our organizational competencies to make sure that we're up and ready to be able to complete the task. So that's really exciting and we're moving forward on that. Another thing we're doing is really working on all our facilities. Yountville was the first one to get kicked off. It's a beautiful facility and it's great that we partnered together on that. We've completed a remodel at the main library, which has gotten rave reviews. And we actually had professors, library school professors, come and review it to talk about the use of teen spaces. So that's pretty neat. And now we're working on American Canyon. And right now their old city hall is being turned into a library and they're working on the insulation this week and we think the internal walls are going to go up. So that's very exciting as well. And we're analyzing Calistoga. That's an old building, was built in 1924, started out as the women's club house and now it's going to be a library. I call it the Winchester, Library Winchester House because it's this tiny little building that has all these odd little rooms that are about eight by eight. One room where we have our server also has a Leaky Sky light, a furnace, and four doors. So not the best use of space. So we're looking at that. Some of the other things that we've been working on is our volunteer program. I'm sure you're anxious to hear about that. We had an informational meeting on February 22nd. We had five interested people, excuse me, seven. Four turned in their application and I just got a note just now that two more volunteers have turned in their application. Three have started that process and one is going to go to her onboarding at the county on April 16th. So we're excited about moving that one forward. We do need to have probably at least eight to 10 volunteers to make the volunteer program here at Yountville Library viable. And that program would enable us to open the library on Wednesday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00. The volunteers would be there just to help patrons with the self-check machine. They won't be able to hand out library cards. They won't be able to take library fines or fees. The computers will be open and working and they can pick up, patrons can pick up their holds. But we do need to have at least two people on board. So if you know anybody out there who wants to volunteer, as soon as we get enough going, we'll get started on that. So lots going on and some of the new programs and services we have, we have what's called Freegal. You can go online and Freegal is free music downloads. You can get three downloads of a song, three songs, every week. So by the end of the month, you'll have a whole CD full. And it's not like an ebook or a library book that you have to return it. You get to keep it. And so that's a pretty exciting program right there. And then the other thing that we're having, and we're getting ready to roll these out hopefully next week, are nooks that you can check out. So if you don't have an e-reader and you want to dip your toe in it, but you don't want to spend the money and you want to see what it's all about, next week or the week after, you can come to the library and check out a nook. And they'll be fully loaded with the New York Times bestsellers, the fiction and the nonfiction. This one is loaded with Spanish-language titles, so we'll have them available in Spanish as well. And there'll be six nooks here at Yountville and they'll also be available at the main. You won't be able to place a hold on them. It'll just be first come, first served. And we've been testing it. This little case has been dropped in every book drop and it's gone on the truck and the nook came out fine. So it's steady. So I'll be happy to ask her any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions? I don't know if our Yountville Ad Hoc Committee members had any additional comments they'd like to make. We'll start there. Do you have any additional information? Councilor Mueller?
Yeah, I have some questions. I did notice in your report that said the library hours weren't going to change for this year. And one thing that might be helpful for, especially for Yountville, is to get a sense of what our circulation has been. And if we can, I know our destination person said earlier he had buckets of metrics, but I'd like about a half a bucket full of metrics.
Sure.
Maybe something that talks about what our circulation is by quarter, year over year, you know, what are the best, what days and hours do people come? It really might help us try to
To drill down.
You know, drill down a little bit and see, you know, when people like to come to our library. Right now we're going to launch the extra hours on Wednesday, but, you know, in the future, we're going to need to make some decisions about other additional hours. So, and I don't really know what your database has.
Right.
So maybe we just need to sit down and see what you can provide and check off what we'd like or
We just recently upgraded our OPAC, our catalog. And one of the nice things about the upgrade is we will be able to drill down. Before, we weren't able to get that specific information and now we will. So if we can work out the parameters of the statistics that we want to gather, we can do that. So we'll be able to see if during, how much circulation there is between that, on that date that we're open late with the volunteers. We'll be able to do that. So that is something that I think would be important to track.
Okay. And then what about some of the other information? Like can we get other libraries? We would like to figure out a way to really be on track for increasing our library hours based on circulation.
I can tell you that your circulation increased 4% over last year. I do have that. And, well, excuse me, it's 4% of our total. That's what it was. It increased by 10,000 items from the previous year. So Yountville's circulation counts for 4% of the grand total. We did circulate over a million items in the whole system last year. And Yountville circulated 38,289 of those items.
So 4% is not, not where we need to get to to get some more hours yet.
Well, what happened is everybody, everybody checked out more. So the pie got bigger, but the piece stayed the same, if I can put it that way.
And then I also noticed that you're requesting, which I think is a great idea, maybe more of a partnership with the town of Yountville to really work out, you know, and expand the volunteer program, which I think is
If we could get the word out, that'd be great.
A great idea. I think that it would really be great if we could really sit down and figure out, maybe you could initiate this. We have a Friends of the Library group, we have our Ad Hoc Committee, certainly town staff and, you know, maybe just some other interested people to really kind of create an outreach plan. Because one of the problems that I've heard people are a little tenuous about signing up, it's like two hours every week, you know, if we can like let them know, two hours once a month, I mean, there's a lot, I think we'll have a real flood of people kind of coming in if they can really see that, okay, I can manage that, that will fit in my schedule, I can really help out. I think that, you know, really getting the message out should be probably our number one goal there. Because I think we've got, so how many people are in the volunteer pool right now?
Right now, we've had four actually do their
How many total?
Three started their volunteer process and one is going to. So until they go through the volunteer process, we can't really count them.
Okay.
So, and we have, just had two more pick-up applications, which are available at the library.
I know, I just turned mine in today and so did my husband's.
You're one of them.
So there's probably at least six or eight. So I think we're probably getting there.
Great. Oh, good.
So anyway, you know, I think having this outreach program and developing some flyers and some information and, you know, really putting something concrete together is going to really help, you know, launch
Yeah. And as soon as we have critical mass, so to speak, then we can have a training. We're not going to send anybody out there, you know, unprepared. So, and we do need to have two at a time so they're not alone at night in the building.
Yeah, and I think by having the volunteers, they're going to give us a lot of great ideas of how to maybe do things differently and more
Precisely.
You know, and they're going to have special interests. So let's get that going and see what we can.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Corin Becker?
I did have a question, Dennis, based on the state's cut, cuts in library funding to zero. And I was interested in reading about the NorthNet library system. Is that completely gone? And what happens if someone does want to, you know, take out a book that's in another library?
That's one of the challenges that we're facing. Yesterday, I was actually at a NorthNet meeting, working to find an interim director, somebody who can help coordinate that. Right now, we have to figure out how we're going to fund it. So there will be dues that each member library will have to pay. And what was once supported by the state will have to figure out how to pay for that. Something that happened, just happened to happen at the same time, but not related, is our Super Search program went down. And that's the program that you, when you go online to our catalog, you could see what's in any other library, not the ones in SNAP, but the ones outside our system. And now we're going to have to figure out a whole new program because it needs to be able to speak to not only our catalog, but, you know, Sonoma County and Mendocino and Yolo, and everybody has a different system. And so that's, we're going to have to do some development on that. And without the state's support, that's really going to be a challenge. And as other libraries, you know, we're very fortunate, even though we took a big cut, we're not like other libraries that are shutting down, laying people off, not having any book budget at all. But we'll have to figure out how we're going to support that program and pay for it. So there are challenges out there and we really want to stay strong as a system because what do we do as libraries but share?
When I came and met with you and you took me on that wonderful tour of the renovated library, it was really terrific.
Thank you.
And you were pointing out the area where you do the, you know, English as a second language or, you know, some of the tutoring. Are those programs still healthy?
No. Literacy was totally cut from the state budget.
Oh, dear.
And that, it was a grant-funded program. So we have our staff, which is part of, they're county staff, so the staff's paid for, but in our budget. But unfortunately, any of the materials and supplies are not paid for and we need to get the foundation and the Friends of the Library have stepped up a little. But we were funded by about $45,000 to $60,000 on any given year for literacy. And that will have a huge impact, not having those funds.
Well, I look forward to participating in the effort to get the word out and we'll help in any way. So just if we could all get together and figure that out together, it'd be great.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Councilor Hall?
Thank you for your report. It was helpful and it's good to see the oversight and the progress that we're making. Just to make sure I got the numbers right, you said you need between eight and 10 volunteers to fulfill the Wednesday night, 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
That would be, you would volunteer once a month and we'd have a spare.
So is it fair to say then between, if I had say 16 to 20 volunteers, I could find two more hours somewhere? Is that a reasonable, is the math correct?
If they would, could commit to those times.
To a different time if we could find that time. So then I could keep extending that. Because I know that the town residents, that's been one of the big opportunities we're trying to evaluate is, how long can we extend the hours of service at the library? And I know there was always historically a challenge about having volunteers participate. And I know that this partnership that we're forming has really been, I think, beneficial to the residents of the community. I know they're all watching today, so I implore them to come down and let's get those numbers up and see if we can't find some additional days and hours, we might be able to extend the length of service and time that we're open.
But you bet.
Thanks for the report. It's great information and we'll see if we can move that to 100 volunteers.
Great.
Thank you. I invite any members of the Board of Supervisors to ask questions at this point. Any, any questions? No? Now I'll invite members of the public. If anyone would like to comment, have a question or comment about our library system and how we're making some changes here. I don't see anybody yet. So just to Councilor Hall's point, I think it's an example like so many other places where we have to look at self-help opportunities and partnering unlike the old days where we just kind of waited on Sacramento to solve all of our problems. And we know that that's not going to happen and it's not going to ever be that way again. So we're not going to wait.
They'd never have been really good at it anyway.
No. Keep changing their phone number on this, I think. Thank you, Dennis, very much for that presentation. Our next presentation is going to be from our Director of Housing and International, international. You just, you just got an even larger, you heard about that pie was growing.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Let me get this, Director of Housing and Intergovernmental Affairs and County Counsel, Larry Foran, welcome.
Thank you. I'm not the county council, that's Mintrane.
You're both here.
And I'm Intergovernmental Affairs, although lately it feels like International Affairs with our visiting delegations. As with Dennis, I'm glad that, actually, I'm glad she followed Clay because I don't have a sizzle reel either. But we do have some serious business here that we'd like to take up with both the council and the board. What I wanted to do today, we're actually going to be asking both the council and the Board of Supervisors to adopt a resolution. And what I wanted to do first was explain some background about why we're asking for this support. And then Mintrane, our Assistant County Counsel, will be here to explain the status of the lawsuit that the county's engaged in and give you an update on that. So as far as background is concerned, in 2009, there was a group calling itself the Mishual Wapo of Alexander Valley. And it's an important distinction that we very importantly continue to refer to them as a group calling themselves that. They filed a suit against the United States and they were seeking three things. One was federal restoration as a sovereign nation. Two was the restoration of trust lands within Napa and Sonoma Counties. And three, which is an important designation, which I'll explain in a second, was the designation of this land as, quote, "restored land," which would then make them eligible for casino gaming pursuant to the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act. So what So, what I want to do is give you a little bit of background on tribal recognition. First, only Congress has the authority to actually grant federal recognition to an Indian tribe. And this group is actually trying to, this group of individuals is trying to circumvent this process by going directly to the federal courts, ensuing the Secretary of the Interior, and over the Bureau of Indian Affairs' decision not to grant them recognition. Congress had previously rejected this group's repeated petitions for restoration of tribal status, and the Assistant Secretary of the Interior, Larry Echolhawke, stated in June 2009, that in fact, the Department of the Interior did not have the authority to restore tribal status to the Wapos. It's important to note that if the federal process was followed, Napa County, along with other interested parties, such as Yountville, would have had an opportunity to, to comment on that petition. However, by going directly to the courts, they've circumvented that process, and thereby we don't have any official ability to comment, other than to join this lawsuit. The Bureau of Indian Affairs established a process where specific lands can be taken into trust by the Bureau of Indian Affairs for the benefit of newly federally recognized Indian tribes. Once taken into trust, these lands are exempt from any local laws and regulations. The normal, so that means the Act Preserve, that means any, anything that you, that we have as a county, or anything you have as a town, they would be exempt from, including, of course, the taxes. The Wapo, or this group of individuals, are claiming to have, are seeking to have a judge order the secretary to take these unidentified lands within the Wapo's alleged historic Aboriginal territory into trust, thereby evading any of the regulatory process for taking the land into trust. So, basically, what they could do would be to purchase land anywhere in the Napa Valley area, including the town of Yountville, and then petition the secretary to take land into trust. The, the biggest issue that's been, you know, people bring up, of course, is Indian gaming, casinos, and as you may have read recently, in Roanoke Park, they just approved a, a new casino. The governor signed a compact, and that's gonna be going forward. Just in, there's like 3,000, 3,000 slot machines were approved for that, and it's gonna be larger than the, as far as slot machines are concerned, than the MGM Grand. And so, we, we take this very, very seriously, and together with the board, we have been following very closely. And in fact, we found out about this lawsuit through reading in the Santa Rosa Press Democrat about this lawsuit, and both Sonoma, and at the time, Lake, and Napa County petitioned to be part of this lawsuit. And were, in fact, admitted, Lake has since pulled out, but Napa and Sonoma County remain parties to that. And what I'm going to do is turn it over to Min Tran, who can give you an update on the lawsuit and where we're at.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, board members. I'm Min Tran, Assistant County Counsel. And as Larry had mentioned there, the tri, or the group here have filed a lawsuit in 2009, and all three counties, Lake, Sonoma, and Napa, have attempted to basically request that the court look at this case, this lawsuit, on basically three main reasons, or three issues. One is the statute limitation, the second is the standing issue, whether or not this group here is who they say they are, and we need to investigate the connection between who they are today versus a tribe that may have been existed, and may have occupied the rancheria back in the '30s. We don't know that. And because of the confidentiality involving the tribal memberships, and the process that this group is trying to bypass, because Congress have set out a process whereby any Indian tribe who want to gain tribal status needs to go through, and instead of going through that process, they are here trying to get the court to decide and order. So, because of those issues here, the counties are trying to ask the court to look at them. Before, today, a group of cities have also attempted to intervene into this lawsuit. And at that time, both the Wapos and the federal government have said that the cities' interests are well represented by the counties, so the city need not be involved. Therefore, the county are involved, so they, the court denied the cities' request to intervene. And at the time that, when these counties were trying to intervene, Napa, Sonoma, and Lake, both the federal government and the tribe did not object. At that time, the fair, the court had granted the status. I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit, but basically, trying to give you a background picture of where we are today, and what, throughout the last two and a half years, the counties, and the federal government, and the group, the Wapos, have been trying to, first, we attempted to go through a mediation process, a confidential mediation process, but after about eight months or so, no result, no resolution was reached. And so, the county had brought a couple of motions to ask the court to look at, you know, statute limitation, standing, and things like that. The court denied the county's motion, basically because of the fact that the court see this as, this case should go through all the way to trial, rather than trying to resolve it in a summary, summary process with the motion. So, that, for those reasons, the court denied it. But at the present time, what the tribe is doing is that they have filed a motion, seeking the court to either revoke the intervening status of the county, or limit the intervening status, because of the fact that they claim that federal recognition is a federal question that has no local impact at all. And of course, as you had heard earlier, that, you know, previously, they have argued that the cities' interests were well represented by the county, and so, it's just a little bit of a circular argument here. But bottom line is that all the counties are asking for is that the tribe, in order for them to gain recognition, they should go through the proper process that was set out by Congress. And that either the counties, or the court, or the federal government should look at, closely look at the standing issue of this group, who they say they are, and what the connections are. Because, you know, otherwise, anybody can come out and claim that they are a tribal, they, they will get proper recognition. So, for those reasons, the county are working hard, trying to aggressively defend this lawsuit, trying to aggressively seek the spotlight, if you will, of the elected officials in order to make sure that the process is adhered to. And for that reason, the county staff are asking that the council members and the board passing this resolution to oppose the recognition and the land restoration process.
So, if I could just ask you a couple clarifying questions, and what we're talking about, your requested action, separate actions potentially, or is it a single action by the Yountville Council is being requested to potentially approve this resolution in support of the board's potential action, right? So, the Board of Supervisors has not formally taken a similar action, is that accurate?
I think staff is looking at this as two separate resolutions, one by the tribal, I'm sorry, by the county council, and one by the county board of supervisors.
So, you, you are looking for two, two actions by each board, one by each board, completely independent of each other?
That is correct, that is correct.
But in support of the idea that we would be saying that we are opposing the request that this group of folks have made, not only for their designation, but also the other points that you made?
The restoration of the land, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Questions from Yountville Council? Any specific questions? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Thank you. First, I thought I heard you say, in what you were just saying, that the court had granted their status at some point, is that true?
That is correct.
Okay.
No, not yet.
And secondly, I'd like to know if this is the same group that had previously asked Congress for their federal recognition, and been denied?
I believe over the years, this group had petitioned to be part of various bills that recognize different groups of tribal, Indian tribal members, and they are named because of the fact we're never included in any of these federal bills, so therefore, they were unsuccessful. But that, yes, that's correct, they have petitioned.
But they were never included, do you, can you answer why? Do you know?
That I don't know, in terms of the various political process that went through.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moller?
Yeah, I have some, a couple of questions, too. You said that what the, the tribe is asking for is a restoration of trust lands. Now, but then I thought I heard you say that these are unidentified, so nobody knows where these, what lands are supposed to restore into trust, correct?
Basically, this tribe, at the present time, is basically land, this group, at the present time, is basically landless, in the sense that they are claiming connection with the Wapos, the Alexandria Valley Rancheria, which is a reservation in Sonoma County. And at the present time, the ownership of that rancheria is no longer belonging to any member of this group, as far as we can tell. So, what they are basically asking in their lawsuit is that for the Secretary of the Interior to transfer federal surplus land into trust for their benefit, and deeming that trust land to be restored land. And the importance of that is that as restored land status, that would be eligible for gaming and additional other purpose under the Indian Regulatory Gaming Act.
Oh, I have one more question, but then that just generated a second, a second additional question. So, are there federal surplus lands within Napa County?
Yes, there are currently. There are, I believe, three identified parcels, and there are also a number of all the parcels that are in the process of becoming identified as surplus land as well.
Okay. Can you quickly tell me where that federal surplus land is?
I think Larry could, actually. Most of the federal surplus land is out near the Berriessa area, to the east of, of the valley. But while they are actually asking for surplus land, there's nothing that prevents them from actually owning land. For as far as we know, they could already have options on land, and we've heard various stories to that effect. And then petitioning the secretary to say, we want these lands to be restored. So, even though their lawsuit specifically mentions a surplus land, at the same time, they could say, we're now a landless tribe, if they were restored recognition, we want this land, and, oh, by the way, this is the land that we own. And, I mean, I don't wanna raise any concern, but it could be in Yountville, it could be anywhere in the Act Preserve, it could be frankly, anywhere for them, as, and they have that right to request that land at that point.
So, I have one last question, then. So, is there any mechanism that the county or a city can approve their purchase of these lands, that they would then ask the Secretary of the Interior to place into federal trust? Is anybody, is there any history of that, or any mechanism for that?
Let me clarify a little bit. In term of the lawsuit itself, at the present time, behind the scene, I think the Wapo groups is trying to work, or has been trying to work a settlement agreement with the federal government. And we don't know what that settlement process would entail. Potentially, it could very well be that, hey, the tribe already own land, perhaps, and this is pure speculation on our part, the tribe or the group members have already owned land. It may be less expensive for the federal government to recognize that and bring that into trust than to go out and seek additional land. So, so that is the speculation from the part of staff.
Councilmember Hall?
I have a question. May I ask you? I mean, on the face of this, this all sounds ridiculous, in some ways, but I don't have a lot of faith in the legal system or the federal government when it comes to things like this. Is there precedent for, for past tribes to go through the court process and have these situations overturned? I mean, what's, what's experience on that?
Well, in the past, especially with a rather famous lawsuit settlement called the Tilly Harwick case, back, started back in the 1970s, a representative of the Pomo tribe have filed a class-action lawsuit representing 34 different tribes. And basically, these are the tribes that have at one time been associated with various rancherias in Northern California. And basing on the California Rancheria Act as of 1959, many of these rancherias were terminated, or the tribal status was disenrolled, disrecognized. So, with this Tilly Harwick case, the court have approved a settlement agreement at that time to recognize 17 groups or tribes, and restore their recognition, federal status as tribal governments. So, yes, they are precedents in term of the court perhaps not litigating or trying on the merit, but allowing the party to settle and work things out, and approving those settlements. So, yes, they are precedents.
I was gonna, if I could, just add, and actually, this administration's position has been, in fact, to settle these lawsuits.
Federal?
The federal, this, this federal administrations. In fact, what we've heard in certain cases was that they invite, after these tribes are denied recognition, they invite them to sue the federal government, and then they settle. And they're, at least they're, the reason that they give is because they're afraid that if they were sued by any of these tribes, that they would in fact lose the lawsuit, and it could have much bigger impact. But in fact, that's been this federal administration's MO has been, to actually settle these lawsuits.
So, we're afraid we're gonna lose, so we just go ahead and give them what they want every time? That's what you're saying. I like that strategy, it's really not a good one. What about the idea of, I guess when I say this whole thing sounds ridiculous, the thing about it that sounds ridiculous to me is you have a former tribe that did own land in Sonoma County, not in Napa County. Is there a possibility, or is it being considered by the, the courts in any way, to say, you know, you had a parcel in Sonoma County, and you sold that, but your request for, I understand why they don't own Lake County, but Napa County is not valid? Is that a possibility?
That certainly is very logical, in term of coming to that conclusion. However, at the present time, this group is, in their lawsuit specifically identify the tri-county area, Lake County, Sonoma, and Napa, as the Aboriginal area of land. So, what they are in fact, asking the federal government to do is that look anywhere in these three counties, and make me whole. That is the, the claim.
Well, and hasn't there already been action? We tried, Napa County tried to remove itself from the equation, but it was denied, isn't that true?
That is correct. In the various motions that the party have going back and forth, the, as I mentioned there, the counties, both Sonoma and Napa, have filed a motion to dismiss the group, the Wapo, as a tribal, because basing on statute limitation, 50 years they waited, and basing on standing. But this court basically deny almost motions, basically saying that it's better to allow the case to be trial, to go through it, rather than to try to do it on a summary, on a short basis at the initial stage. Let's have the case go through discovery, let's have the parties ferret it out, and bring the case to trial. That is, on that base, the court denied the county's motion previously, yes.
I invite any of the Board of Supervisors, Chair Caldwell?
I just had a couple of comments. Certainly, I'm very sympathetic to Native Americans, and, you know, some of those historical things that have happened in the past. But I think that when you look at this particular issue, and I'm going by memory now, because it's not in the staff report, so Larry or Min, when I say something that's incorrect, please feel free to jump up and stop me. You touched on this a little bit, I believe that it's important to show that this tribe did have recognition and status at one time, that in 1959, it did voluntarily give up that, and the land that was 100 and some acres that was located in the Alexander Valley was then dispersed amongst the remaining members, and then that land has then since been privately sold, and profits have been made, so on and so forth. That they were involved in the litigation in 1975, and the litigation was going through the process, and for some reason, whatever reason, at near the end of that process, they voluntarily pulled out of that process, and, and did not continue to participate, even though, as the process continued forward, many of those tribes were subsequently recognized, and status was given for those tribes. Now that we fast-forward- Now that we fast forward to this date, you know, they're back again with very little or no, there's no transparency on how these potential, or people that are potentially saying that they are somehow descendants of the original tribe. We don't know anything about how that has gone through any kind of a process to determine whether or not they truly are descendants of that. That's between the BIA and, and that, that group. And we're not involved in that.
Right. I, I, I think what you have said is correct in the sense that we are talking, we still don't know who this group is and what their connection is to the people that may have lived at one time in the Alexander, in the Ranjoria located in the Alexander Valley. So I think that's key and that's important to make the distinction. That is correct, that back in 1959, there was a Ranjoria in Alexander Valley that was recognized and subsequently terminated. How that Ranjoria was terminated was that it, the BIA Bureau of Indian Affairs at that time have went out and conducted a survey and proposed a distribution plan. And having the people who live on that Ranjoria agree to that plan to take the land in fee, basically, the Ranjoria land was divvy up and the individual members take the fee in, the land in fee title and gone away happily at that time. And so basing on that agreement, basing on that distribution plan, the Ranjoria was terminated. Now this group that is coming in front of us today, we have no idea who they are because we don't and cannot make that connection. And until we do, we would not be able to say for sure that they are indeed the direct descendants of a tribe that at one time had been recognized by the federal government, had lived in that, at that Ranjoria. So, so there are a couple of gaps here, to say the least. But mainly, what Supervisor Caldwell said is correct in term of the Ranjoria itself that was terminated.
Any other Supervisors have questions at this point?
No questions.
So, one question I did want to follow up on, is there a difference between publicly-owned and privately-owned land in this argument? Assuming federal status is given to this group, is there a distinction there or not?
Well, the distinction itself perhaps is not too much in the sense that if you have a federally recognized tribe, there is a process for which any federally recognized tribe can ask for certain land to be taken into trust. And of course, in order to exercise control over that land, the tribe have to have some ownership of that land first. And then the process would involve the local community inputs. And then, and the BIA would go through and recognize and take that land into trust. What it is, is it's convert the ownership of that land from fee title to trust land. And once it become trust land, basically, it's the federal government who owns the land for the benefit of the tribe or the tribal members.
And what, what compensation, if any, is given to the public or private agent that used to own that land?
I, I think that generally speaking, again, the ownership, I think, is not, for me, it's not that, would not make a huge difference. Because if we are talking about eminent domain, then certainly fair market value, but I have not seen the federal government taking land over eminent domain on behalf of a group that have yet to be recognized. So I think more likely than not, it would be the tribe. And again, we are talking about the concern of settlement behind the scene between the federal government and the group here to allow for that type of transfer or taking land into trust.
And I think maybe to, maybe to also clarify, most of these groups have investors behind them, and we're pretty certain that this group does have investors behind them. They'll often option land or they'll buy it outright on behalf of the tribe for purposes of turning it into sovereign status. So for all we know, they could have options on land already in the valley somewhere that they're intending to ask for sovereign status for.
Any other questions as Supervisors? If not, I'll invite the public to comment or ask questions if you'd like. Anyone like to come forward at this time? Such a...
I just had a follow-up.
Sure. Supervisor Dillon?
You know, Napa County's been very concerned about this issue for many, many, many years. It isn't just with the filing of this lawsuit that we got involved in this issue. We've had a three-county consortium.
Two thousand and three.
Solano County, Sonoma County, and Napa County. And gosh, for 10 years?
Since 2003.
Since 2003. And, you know, have, had a lawyer on, on retainer, if you will, in Washington DC who specializes in these things. And the reason we did that is because of all of us watching what happened in Sonoma County and not wanting the same thing to happen here. And Solano County shares this same concern. And it's hard to reach the same kind of consensus among all 58 counties because some of them enjoy really great relationships with their local Native American tribes. And some, some do and some don't. And so there's a disparity throughout the state in terms of how these relationships work. We have, you know, we have, we have something very special here, as I, you know, we all know. And we're very concerned about, it, this isn't about not wanting any one ethnic group to not be successful. It's about all of us appreciating and protecting the agricultural preserve. So that's what, what our real focus is here. And, and the only other thing I wanted to add is that we recently, like within the last week, completed a three-page FAQ about this issue, which, I was gonna call him Mr. Ambassador, the International Manager. Larry, Larry could get this to Steve or staff to, to distribute to you because it's, having spoken to a number of groups about this issue and been very involved in this issue in, in the last few years, a lot of people ask the same questions you're asking today and they want to understand it better. So we have FAQ, you know, hopefully the FAQs, which we tried to keep to two pages, but are three. But, you know, it's not a simple issue. It's, it's, it's complex. So hopefully that'll help.
If, if I could, it, in some, in some counties, you know, tribes had, had land already. So they knew what, you know, they, there was a predictability. This is the piece of land that they had. And, and so then the, the, the community could plan around, around that. We have, we don't know what land they, that they're looking at. We don't know, you know, what use they're looking for on that land. And so, and, and once, once they get recognition and, and take that land into, into trust, they're a sovereign nation and they can do whatever they want. So there's, we have no answers about where this can be, what it can be. And once it's, once it's there, it's, it can be whatever it wants to be. And, you know, if, if a tribe wanted to buy land and use, use it to, use the Napa County General Plan as a guide for what it was gonna do and, and actually would do that, you know, we don't have that, we don't have an issue with that. The issue is when it comes into trust, they can, they're, they're a separate entity and they can do whatever they want on that land. And we don't know where that is and what that plan is.
I did want to just recognize also, the, the council and, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, received an email from Holly Hansen and Jim Massey, residents of Yountville, who were supporting the recommendation of staff as presented. So I just wanted to mention their outreach there. So just again, to be clear on the request of action, from the Yountville Council's perspective, county staff is asking us to approve this resolution that would be supporting your, the Supervisor's action, future action. But they, or, so, you haven't actually voted on this?
We would be doing it today.
But we would have two separate votes? Or we, or how, that's, I just want to know how legislative we're gonna do this.
Let me try to help. When you're ready, you will have two motions. The first motion, and in this special packet, there is a separate staff report and a resolution for the County Board of Supervisors to vote on and approve. And then assuming that we are voting, we have a, a staff report and a resolution supporting their efforts. So it probably is logical to let them go first. Because if, if some chance they said no, we wouldn't want to necessarily support a resolution.
You now understand why I wanted clarification?
I'm trying to help.
So with that, Chair, I'll invite you to discuss and take any action.
Just, just to make sure that I cover all the bases, I just wanted to offer one more opportunity. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the Board of Supervisors on the proposed resolution, now would be the time. Seeing none, board is ready for a motion?
I would move the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And to follow that up, is there any action the council would like to take? Comments? Comments first? Yeah, Vice Mayor?
I'll start off. First of all, thank you very much. And I really appreciate, back there hiding a little bit from us now, the comments, I, it's one of those situations where you think you know a lot about what's going on and you find out there's always that one more wrinkle that you don't know. So this has been very informative, so I appreciate the, particularly the staff presentation and certainly the work of, of the county. And I want to echo a couple of the comments, which is, to me, this issue is a complete separation between history and recognition of culture and casino gambling. That's what it really comes down to, in, in my view, and development within not only the Ag Preserve, that may be one part of it, but it could be somewhere outside of the Ag Preserve. And it's about us having a control over our culture, what our kids see, what goes on in our county, et cetera. And I, I cannot think of enough words to say how much I oppose this. So whatever we want to write in there, I'm for it, as long as it's against it. And I, I think what I, I didn't recognize before, most importantly, was the settlement situation is what's, what now scares me the most, is, you know, you take it to trial, I'm not sure if it's a judge or jury trial, but talking about some of these things, there seems to be common sense on our side. But when you're talking about somebody in Washington who wants the politics to go away, that frightens me tremendously. So the importance of a resolution may be more important than I thought it was before and getting our federally elected officials involved, which we have and you all have done, in lobbying to the Obama administration, obviously is essential. Because if the Obama administration allows us to happen, then it happens and there's not much we can do about it. So I most certainly support it and again, thank you for, for the presentation.
Other discussion by council? Councilmember Mueller?
I have a question. I, I just want to be clear about our resolution. I think the, the first point is that we are strongly opposing, if we all agree, tribal recognition or land restoration within an apostle Indian gaming casino within the town of Yountville. And this is a, a resolution. It's not really an ordinance because if there is any kind of lands that are already bought and put into trust, they have ultimate sovereignty and we can't really do anything about it. Is that right? And is this covered the vets home?
Well, I would also say the, the wording in our resolution is also broad. It's a broader, it's within the town of Yountville and the county, you know, area completely. So if you read into the...
Where's it say the county here? Because that was my question, is this, are we just talking about Yountville? Are we talking about the county or?
The, the resolution as it's written says creation of any, creation of any Indian gaming casino within the town of Yountville as well as, as well as the establishment of reservations on which there could be casino gaming operations. So, Councilmember Mueller, do you, are you still looking for further clarification on that?
It seems to say it's just specific to the town of Yountville. That's what our resolution is.
Or you could modify the resolution, include county of Napa if you'd like as well.
I think what, the action that was just taken by the Board of Supervisors was all-encompassing of the county. We're talking about our jurisdiction, jurisdiction specifically to Yountville.
And that was my understanding. I just wanted to clarify.
That's as it's presented as I read it.
Well, I think the intent of staff, and I will apologize, was that it be a county-wide broad support, not a Yountville specific. So in our sense of identifying that, our efforts may have, we may have added, our, our intent was to support the opposition countywide. And when you read the staff report and some of the others, we talk about the broader impacts and...
Well, certainly, if there's a motion to be had, you're welcome to amend language if there's an interest by the motioning council member to have this reached countywide as opposed to townwide.
I have one more question, too. On number two in the resolution, it says legislative actions and further into this position. So can I just get some information, what, what that might include?
Well, actually, the action you're taking now would be a legislative action correspondence, for example, to Senator Feinstein's office, supporting our disposition would be the type of legislative action that we're talking about.
Or the governor who ultimately...
Or the governor. A lot of, that would be what we're talking about, is legislative action and supportive. You would have to be consistent with the policy direction that the council's taken.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Dornbeck?
Well, just a comment, and that is that I find it a hard issue in some ways, not in others. And I, because we are all aware of the Wappo tribal ancestral home being here in the Napa Valley, but since these people did pull out of the, of the agreement in, and the Ranjoria as well, and we can't prove that these people making up this group are even related to those. But, you know, our little cemetery has been a burial ground for a thousand years. So it's, it's, it's heart-wrenching thing to me, but I do, do not support them have building casinos, certainly. But anyway, just a statement of feeling about it.
That's fine. Councilmember Hall, any, for the comments?
No, only that I'd probably like to put forward a motion.
If, if you'd like to do that, now would be the time.
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution Number 3018-12 amended to include in the language somewhere the entire county of Napa, Napa wide, Napa County wide, supporting the Napa County Board of Supervisors and strongly opposing any tribal recognition or land restoration that allowed the creation of any Indian gaming casino within the town of Yountville, including the county of Napa, as well as the establishment of reservations on which there could be casino gaming operations.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None? It carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you Supervisors. With that, we have only one item left, and that is adjournment. But I would just like to say thanks to all of you, Chair Caldwell, for initiating this, this effort, and all of you for attending. It's been our pleasure to host you this evening. And thank you, very polite, very quiet audience, for, for being with us. And you're welcome in 30 minutes to stay here for our regularly scheduled meeting, if you so choose. But with that, is there a motion to adjourn our special joint session of the Board of Supervisors? And the Yountville Town Council? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think the board needs to maybe take action.
We will be adjourning this meeting to a special meeting on Monday, April 9th, at 8:30 at the Napa County Sheriff's Office Training Room, 1535 Airport Boulevard, Napa. Good.
Great. Thank you again. Thanks, everyone. See you in 30 minutes.